All right, good evening. The time being 7:00 PM on August 16th, 2021. All members of the planning board being present, call this meeting to order. Just a heads up to anybody who might have been coming in for either items E or F. Both of the applicants for those two hearings have requested to be continued to our 9:13 meeting. So you don't need to hang around. You can head out if you want. You won't miss anything because we won't do anything with either of those two hearings.
Can you give the address?
What's that? Oh, I'm sorry. 30 East Street and 461 Main Street. Those are the two that are being continued without any further discussion this evening. All right, moving on. Agenda item A, approval of minutes from July 19th, 2021.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
All right, motion made in second. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to agenda item B, committee reports, administrative actions. Any committee reports any of the members wish to make at this time? All right, seeing none. Moving on to agenda item B2, town planner's report. I didn't see where we have one in here, and the town planner is currently out on maternity. Congratulations to her and her new baby. Healthy, happy, and home. So, that's it for those. Moving on to agenda item C, 1639 Chandler Street, family suite special permit. Do we have a motion to waive the public hearing?
No.
A motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Do we have anyone here for 639 Chandler Street?
Right there at table, sir.
Uh, no, right here, please.
My name is William Penny. I'm the applicant.
Can you use the microphone?
Yeah, you can just turn that. For whatever reason, they have that turned away from you. Just turn it toward you so they can pick you up. There you go.
Okay.
Thank you.
My name is William Penny. I'm the applicant for 639 Chandler Street. I'm representing the owners that are here, Anthony and Barbara Camcio. What we're looking to do is, we're currently under construction on an 800-square-foot family suite that was approved. Took forever to get approved, by the way, because there was an issue with the planning board at the time because of COVID. But anyway, we got under construction, and the building inspector, we originally had planned to have a covered porch at the back of this unit, and the building inspector deemed that that would put us over the 800-square-foot requirement for a family suite without a special permit. So the owners still would like to, we're building it as a deck. Deck's actually framed, if any of you gentlemen have, and ladies have gone by there. But we would like to cover it as the original plan. And I submitted some drawings. It actually adds 116 square feet. It's not that big, it's only 8 by 14. And it's on the back of the building. Doesn't require any additional zoning, setback, problems, we have plenty of land. Doesn't interfere with the sewer hookup, anything. It just will prevent the owner having to shovel it.
Valid reasoning.
I mean, it's not that complicated.
All right, start with Mr. Delaney.
First of all, I am under the impression that our family suite is 1,000 square feet. We can't exceed. Or was there a reason why this one couldn't exceed to 1,000 square feet?
So originally, without the covered porch, it was under the 800. So they just went administratively through the building department. They want to add the covered porch, which will put them over the 800 square feet. So that's why they're here for a special permit.
Okay, so but-
They can go up to 1,000.
They can go up to 1,000?
Right.
Okay, the thing is, where you can go up to 1,000, you're well within the parameters of what you have to do. I think I'm all set with this.
Mr. Fattia.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So you're not finishing up the walls and just putting a covered roof over, correct?
There's a covered roof with three columns, that's correct.
So no finished room, just a outside area?
There's actually an exterior door, a slider that's already put in place that's going to enter onto this porch. So that the actual heated and cooled living space stops before the porch.
Sure, gotcha. Yeah, I did go by the house and couldn't see much from the street because you have, it's tucked in the very back there, so-
Exactly.
But I did see the work being done. It looks like it's getting underway, so I got a question here whether you checked with the building inspector, which you did, so that's great. So total square feet of the deck area is 116 square feet, like you said, right? So that brings us up to 916 total, correct, for the full family suite?
Correct.
With that being said, I'm fine. I don't see any problems. I love the idea of family suites. So how long ago did we grant that for you?
You did.
We didn't. They started off, they were under the number-
We did it, that's right. That's right. I don't know what the problem was, but I didn't think it was held up here because we usually endorse these pretty easily because it's a family going in there with all the benefits of extended families.
It was when the passing of town council.
Yes.
Yes, that was the problem.
Right. They kind of fell within that. We had submitted it to the town council, and he passed away, and it kind of got held up there.
Sounds good, so with that, I'm all set.
Mr. Ryder?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The other board members answered my questions, and you answered the question about setback, so I'm all set. Thank you.
Mr. Powell?
I'll make it easy, I'm all set.
Chair is all set as well. Is there anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns on this hearing? Seeing and hearing none. Bring it back to the board. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion opposed in here.
Motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, and all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. As to the family suite special permit, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the family suite for a total of 916 total square feet, as presented.
All right, the only thing, just for comment if we could, Mr. Sadwick had put in a note into our packets, just asking, and I think this might be something we're just going to look to do going forward on these, which is just add a condition to the permit on the event of a foreclosure sale of the premises by a mortgagee or any lien holder of record with priority over this said special permit, if that happens, that it voids the special permit for the family suite. So if none of the members have any issue with that, we'll just add that.
Add that in.
And I have the feeling that we're just be looking to do that going forward. So this is just the first time we're doing it. All right, so we have that motion with that condition included. We have a motion made.
Second.
Motion seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Good luck.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Good luck. All right, moving on to agenda item D, 24 Pleasant Street. Site plan special permit, special permit for the Town Center Overlay District and Groundwater Protection District. Do I have a motion to waive the public hearing?
No.
A motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Do we have anyone here for 24 Pleasant Street? While you gentlemen are getting situated, did you receive the message from the secretary for the board on the, from the, kind of sending you the message from the fire chief?
I haven't seen that.
Okay, it's in, did they leave it for each of us, or have I seen? Was it just me?
It's you.
All right, so if nobody has this, all right, if you guys just want to give your names to the record, I just want to, and I'll just pass this out to you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. David Plunkett represents the applicant. With me here today is Matt Dusenberry from the engineering group, and Jack Sullivan from Gavin &amp; Sullivan.
All right, so I'll give you that, just to take a look at the top, but it's in reference to the sweep for the engines?
Yeah, there was it.
Because I think we also got an email, but it's just, the chief's just looking through. Different sweep.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and you know, any items such as that, you know, redress, whatever comes up. I mean, today, I think it's going to be a matter of giving an overview.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure you guys had it, that was all.
Yeah.
It's nothing that's going to mess up anything you're doing this evening. It's really just informational for you, knowing that it's something they're looking for. All right. You may, sure. Thank you. All right, gentlemen, the floor is yours.
All right, well, Jack is handing out the renderings of the proposed building, just to give you an overview of the proposal.
Thank you.
Everyone I'm sure is aware, it's right across the street, on Pleasant Street, the old Sycamore Hall structure. And basically, you know, we had been in, I think it was three or four years ago now, that there was a special permit issue in which a drive-through was going to be created and turn the building into a bank. The timing of that proposal was just followed by the trend of the bank and institutions to no longer have as much need for drive-throughs and brick and mortar, and they went to more so the electronic financial transactions that have taken hold and continue to grow. So that was not a viable use of the property based upon the circumstances of then ensued afterwards. What we have here today, and we had come before the board once as an informal general proposal to talk about the potential use. So it's the site across the street, and the proposal is to remove the existing carriage house, which we already have the permission for the demolition of that property. And the project would result in the preservation of Sycamore Hall, and then the build-out of an eight-unit building adjacent to it, which would basically, pretty much mirror in the sense of capturing all the architectural details and significant provisions of the existing building into the new building. The existing building would be upgraded in sense of addressing matters that, over the years, there's been a certain degree of degradation of the building itself, and be brought back to, you know, full disglory, so to speak, of the building. We've created a situation where the entryway and exit will all be handled off of the Pleasant Street area. And that, you know, when we were here last time, there was, you know, questions and concerns with the exit onto the Main Street, whether people would take right turns and try to take left turns and things of that sort. So basically, we're going from a situation where there's company, I believe, five units, five and three, correct? So eight units in existence right now. And the end result would be eight units in the new structure plus four units in the existing Sycamore Hall building. They'll all be, you know, one-bedroom, I believe, in the entire, in all the units. And in terms of, this is coming under a special permit under the Town Center Overlay District. The mixed-use development component of this is going to be that in the Sycamore Hall, the existing Sycamore Hall structure, one of the four units is going to be preserved for the Tewksbury Historic Commission or-
Commission.
Society, I'm sorry. I keep forgetting which is which. But actually, but the society and the commission do work very closely together. And this would be a matter in which this is going to be offered to the town, offered to the historical group without charge, that they would have the ability to be there and carry on their function and carry out their mission statement, which, very important. I know that when we redid the town hall, there was a, you know, treasure trove of old documents and information and the history of this town that were somewhat disrepair and not really in the order that it should be. So we have this group that is in town that is dedicated to the purpose of preserving our heritage, preserving our historical background, and this would give them a home. This would give them space, this would give them the ability to do what they are created for, to preserve our history. Anyone that's, you know, a history buff, or even if you're not a history buff, one of the oldest axioms of reality is that if you forget your history, you're doomed, you know, and you don't appreciate what it is that you have in your community unless you know where we came from, where we, how we originated, and how we have transformed over the years to our community as it exists today. So that would be the histor-, I mean, I'm sorry, that would be the mixed-use component of it, dedicated for a commercial purpose, for a business office, for the historical, historic society. And, you know, again, that's going to be a grant in terms of a, you know, leasehold agreement, long-term leasehold agreement, you know, that they won't be paying a monthly rent for it. So it's a great opportunity for them, for the town, and it will help, it will be our way of, or the proponents' way of addressing the mixed-use component of it. As part of the preparation for tonight, we also had a traffic analysis done that was submitted to the board for review. Ken Cram, who originated, is, you know, has a conflict with tonight's meeting, but, you know, the expectation is that you would be probably, I'm guessing that you'd be sending this out for some type of peer review, or if not, there's a lot of information there that, you know, you have the, need the time and opportunity to read the review and digest what's there, so the next meeting, Mr. Cram will be present. We did have the IDR meeting. It was last, I believe it was last Tuesday, and I think it went fairly well in terms of all the information, the request for information was either addressed at the time or undertakings to provide the town what is going to be needed. One of the key points as part of the IDR was, you know, Mr. Sullivan presenting the rendering for the building, and as usual, I think that, you know, and I wasn't sitting on this side of the table, I always appreciated the work product of Mr. Sullivan, and now that I'm on this side of the table, I appreciate it even more. So, I mean, you can see, you know, what is being proposed is really quite a impressive culling in of all these historic, all these architectural details and the recreation line. Also, as part of the Town Center Overlay presentation, we have along that Main Street area, you know, like a little pocket park also. And if you see on the plans that were submitted, it shows that there's going to be, you know, little area right at the, in front of the two buildings, between the two buildings, you know, be, you know, park, you know, benches and things of that sort, which, again, will help to address the intent of the Town Center Overlay District is to create a certain ambiance of, you know, a town center that we have in the area that is, you know, something more than just the Route 38 corridor. So with that, I will ask Matt to review any of the changes relative to the August 13th letter that was sent regarding the review of the plans that submitted during the IDR meeting, and I think most of them are probably fairly straightforward. I'll ask Matt to address those.
I'm Matt Dusenberry from Land Engineering and Environment Services. I'm filling in for Doug tonight. I'm a completely different guy than Doug is, as you probably are aware. As far as the changes go, from the preliminary meeting, we moved the building up towards Main Street. Previously, we had a driveway cutting through all the way, having a right turn only onto Main Street. We eliminated that and have a one entrance, one exit entryway. The grading up on the entryway slopes down to the south, where we have a catch basin sited there, and it feeds in a subsurface drainage system that takes care of the drainage for the entire street. As far as the comments we received, we haven't had a chance to revise the plans just of yet. One of the main comments was to move the dumpster for fear of when it's emptied, the trash refusal truck will back up onto Pleasant Street. So I don't, can you see that plan?
No.
Is it all right if I go up here and point out?
Go closer if you want. Just use the microphone from the podium, if you wouldn't mind.
Okay, so the dumpster is currently proposed right here. We're now proposing to move it in this area. It'll take up two parking spaces, but we have two additional parking spaces as it is, so we can afford to lose those two spaces. So a truck will be able to enter back down to here, which is used for a turning. T for fire truck and the dumpster truck can use it. Then they can empty the trash and leave through the same exit. Doing this, we'd have, as I said, it takes up two parking spaces. We'll have to shift the remaining, I think it's four, three, four spaces towards Pleasant Street, but it's only a matter of six feet or so, so it doesn't afford any difference. Another issue was snow storage, but with moving this dumpster, we gain all the snow, all the snow storage where it currently is proposed, along with on the outside of the entire parking area. I think there was comments of increasing the sidewalk to the Pocket Park. We currently have just three feet. ADA, I believe, requires four feet, so that's a pretty simple change. Other than that, the remaining comments we received, we have no issues with any of those comments, and it's just a matter of updating the plans and revising to meet those comments.
So there'll be a formal response to Mr. Hardman, and hopefully by the next meeting, there will be the opportunity for him to then review the responses and have some type of final letter at that time. Mr. Chairman, at this time, if I could ask Jack Sullivan to review the details of the proposed building, and if he has any, you know, specifics in terms of the upgrading of the existing building.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members.
Actually, if you don't mind, just have you pull the microphone over?
Sure.
Sorry.
Thank you. Okay. As you can see, but on the handout, the front sheet is the new building, and we are incorporating as many of the historical architectural features, I mean, that is, that existing building, I've been around a long time. I've always noticed that building. And to be honest, unfortunately, it's gone into somewhat disrepair. So we're proposing to replicate that building as much as we can. Better materials now, so there's more money. And then rehab the existing building. Now, the existing building is going to be a mixed-use building now, because it's going to have a commercial component, so we have to address that building code. So the existing building will be brought up to today's building code in energy code as much as it has to because of mixed use. My client really wants to do a good job here because it's in a similar town, want to compliment how close it is to what we've just done here with the town hall and the fire station across the street, and, you know, just really be proud of what we can build, so. It will be four, I'm sorry, it will be eight units of the new building, four on the first floor will be fully handicapped accessible. The units are going to be about 850 square feet per, all one-bedroom units.
All right. Anything else? Just plug it?
I think that's all we have at this time, so, you know, if any questions, hopefully we'll be able to present whatever information you're looking for.
All right, so Mr. Ryder?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think I have a few. I'll start by the concern of more vehicle traffic coming onto Pleasant Street. We roughly have another 800-plus students be going in there, fall '24, plus the, you know, you have your high school. I'm concerned of adding any additional traffic in that intersection. Anytime from 4 o'clock to 6 o'clock, you cannot move from Summer Street to Main Street. And I think, you know, in one of your proposals, you boxed out a 30 by 20, do-not-block zone coming out of that parcel. That didn't work when there was a fire station there. There was always an impact. And I think you're, the intent, the reason for the fire station not going where it currently lives was because of egress of the vehicular traffic coming onto Main Street. So I think we solved one problem by removing the fire station, and now we're intending of putting another eight more units, and then a commercial component into that. Me personally, I would rather see a right turn laying out onto Main Street. I think that's going to funnel traffic much better out onto 38, in and out of that parcel. I think a right turn in, or a one-way, so to speak, into that back parking lot would work better. My opinion, I think that's something that, I think this is going to be, need to be looked at by our traffic peer review. I think that should be looked at. There's been many traffic studies, as this board knows, about the reconstruction of the intersection at East Pleasant, Maine. I think this needs to be thrown into the mix there. So I think that's something we should take the 10,000-foot view on before we, you know, make any decision from the board here permitting anything. Also, there was some concerns with some stormwater from Mr. Hardman. I did not see any of the calculations in there. I know that was in one of the questions from Mr. Hardman. The stormwater calculations were not submitted as part of this. So would like to see those. And what is the setback between the new existing building and the existing building?
Existing, the proposed?
Yeah, yeah, proposed. What's your distance between the two?
A little over 15 feet.
15 feet. Now, is that, due to that, I think that's going to meet the new requirement to be sprinkled?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Both buildings will be sprinkled?
Both buildings, yes.
Okay.
The existing building is sprinkled right now.
It currently is?
Yeah, it is.
Okay. You know, I think for right now, that's what I have. But the biggest concern I have there is the impact on traffic. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Fattia?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I echo Mr. Ryder's concerns about Pleasant Street as well. I brought it up at the original concept plan, when you brought it in, so I think it's going to be a nightmare coming in and out of that Pleasant Street address from this driveway you're proposing. You know, I don't know why you took out the Main Street exit, exit onto, you know, onto Route 38, but I thought that would have been a nice solution to the problem, so. I had some concerns, Mr. Sullivan, I've seen the rendering here, so on page two, right?
Yep.
You have the two buildings side by side. So, the building on the left is the new building.
That's the new building.
Wow, okay. I thought you were doing a recreation of that building side by side, but it looks great.
Well, we're trying to replicate as much as we can.
Yeah.
But that, the one on the left is the new building.
Wow, it's a very nice design and that'll, you know, make a nice presentation to complement Sycamore Hall as well. So, what is the height of the new building?
30, maybe 32 feet.
32 feet, okay.
You know, it's the same building, different facade, that we're going to be doing at 960 Main Street, the back building.
Okay.
So, it's the same footprint.
So, same size as Sycamore Hall?
Oh, no, it's lower.
Lower?
It's lower than Sycamore.
Okay, all right. Yeah, because I've seen the two pictures, I'm like, it looks beautiful, that's for sure. You know, I mean, you did a nice job on the rendering here, but I wasn't sure if that was going to be the new Sycamore Hall you had on the presentation. That's great, it'll do a nice accent to the town center, so. I had another couple of questions. One was a fire department question, another one was a couple of issues with Mr. Hardeman's comments, but I'll hold off until our next meeting. Just one more question I have here, is the benches that you're proposing in the front, is that for public use or just for the building use?
I think the intent is to have it that, you know, if someone, I know there's another location along the Route 38 corridor that they have a "no loitering" sign on it, so that the intent would be not to prevent someone from sitting on it, but to make certain that there's an ability to, you know, let people know that they have to move on.
Sit too long?
You know, if someone decides that they're going to...
Sleep there.
Use that as a location to hang out and, you know. So, I don't think that the intent is to restrict it exclusively to the residents at the location, but, you know, certainly we're aware of the need to retain control over it to make certain that control is the key.
Sure. And maintenance of that park area will be done by the building maintenance people as well?
Yes, that would not be an obligation of the Town of Tuxbury. That would be part and parcel of the operation of the buildings and the maintenance and upkeep of the property. But again, we will make certain that we have a control element that it isn't used other than as anticipated.
Okay. So, just one last question, I'll let my colleagues speak. The abreviations in the rear of the building, doing some screening from the neighbors in the back, will they be eight foot, Mr. Puckett? I think that's the new regulation.
If, you know, if that's the zoning, whatever the zoning requires, we're not looking for any waivers or any...
Right, that's what I figured.
...of that sort, so.
Good.
You know, whatever the bylaws require, that's what would be done.
Sounds good. Okay, all set, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Mr. Patel.
Mr. Fowler. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I guess I had my work cut out for me. I looked at this at first, and, not at first, I looked at it all weekend and am impressed, so impressed with the design of the building. I know it replicates Sycamore Hall, but it does it in a manner that it makes it shine. To me, this corner would be a jewel in the town center area. The previous plan that we had, that was submitted to us, I thought was, the driveway was convoluted. Can't say it any better than that. It looked confusing. This, to me, is well-defined. One entrance in, one entrance out. The other one, when it went out, the part that went out on Main Street, it would have been difficult to make sure that no one tried to cross both lanes. Taking a right turn, that's fine, if you can make them take the right turn. But if someone wants to go towards Lowell, they were going to go if there was a hole, if there was an opening. And that bothered me. This doesn't bother me, and I've seen a lot of driveways, I've seen a lot of traffic flows. I would rather see that traffic pattern, especially in lieu of the fact that the emergency vehicles aren't coming out of the fire station over there anymore from this December on, when they go over to the new building. I believe that this is probably, no, actually, I think it will definitely be a good use of this property. It's going to be really an attractive area. I like the way that when you're driving down the street, it kind of screens the gas station.
Yeah.
I'm not trying to tell you to buy the gas station, but, you know, it screens the gas station. I thought it was a good idea. And with the sidewalks on the site, there's good pedestrian movement. You have lights. And the biggest thing, to me, as far as traffic flow is concerned, if someone wants to go to Wilmington or Lowell, they come out, get to the intersection, and they use the lights to flow. They're not going to jump between cars out of a driveway that's 100 feet up on the frontage area. So, to me, this is, I like the plan. I like the looks of the building, I like the flow of the traffic. And I could only be, I'll wait for Mr. Strems' analysis because I have all the faith in the world in him. He's been a good asset to this town on all his proposals. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Delaney?
My first question is, you pointed out the area where you're going to have the snow storage. Is that area going to be big enough to hold all the snow that's in there? Or are you going to make provisions to remove the snow from the site if there's a problem with the parking spaces?
Well, we gained that area from the dumpsters and then the whole perimeter of the parking lot is snow storage as well. So, there should be plenty of snow storage. No one can tell how much snow we're actually going to get in a year, but if need be, the snow would have to be removed.
Okay. You know, the thing is, with snow storage, you start to build up the snow and you start to lose the parking spaces. You know, you've designed it so that the parking spaces are there, but you don't want to lose them in a snowstorm.
Right.
Okay, as a matter of fact, you need them more, the parking space more in a snowstorm. The other thing is, let me make it known that I think the renderings and stuff, I think this is a beautiful building. I think it will dress up the Town of Tuxbury and the center to make it right, to make it right and to make it look good with all the other things that have happened here. The one other thing, too, is we talk about the traffic. The thing is, the schools, the high schools, they all have a certain time that they get out of school and they all come at once, okay? The traffic for these buildings are people that work, so you're not going to be guaranteed that all of these people are going to be on the road parked at the same time. Okay, I feel as though that there could be an impact, but the people that work or do whatever, that are living in these apartments, they're all coming at different times. It's not like you've got 32 cars sitting out there waiting to get into their unit. So, as far as I'm concerned, I think the entrance or whatever, I agree to it because I don't like an entrance onto Route 38. You know, that's, and you always know that somebody's going to try to take a left to go to Lowell. Okay, that's my opinion. I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Delaney. So, I don't think there's a whole lot of question how nice the renderings look and, you know, how beautiful the building would be or, you know, any renovations to the existing building. I think really it's going to ultimately come down to, you know, can it work there in terms of the ins and the outs of the people that would be there? Because I don't think anybody can really question what it looks like. I think it would look very good in the town center. I mean, it fits what's there, it fits the idea of what town center would be. So, I almost set that aside. It's just, can you get by the other potential issues? But just for clarification point, there are currently eight units on the site now, correct?
Correct.
So, the difference we're talking about is four.
Correct.
One of which would be turned into the Historical Society use. And I have no idea, I'll be honest, and I'm not being a wise guy, I had no idea how busy that would mean. I don't know if that just means weather's coming, that's, you know, kind of curating, how much. I have no idea. I don't know what traffic that itself would do. So, we're really talking about seven living units, though. I mean, I'm sorry.
No.
10, right?
11.
11, I'm sorry. 11 living units, one non. So, the difference is, the difference is three living units from what you have on site now.
Yeah.
So, that's the real difference we're talking about. So, it's whether or not you feel, we feel that the three units plus the commercial is too much of a difference from what's there now because, you know, there are people coming in and out of there as it is. So, you're not going from scratch. Do you have any idea, even ballparked, how many cars are currently on site there?
It's hard to say, Mr. Chairman, because it's just packed hell to skelter. There's trash barrels everywhere.
Let me do it this way, maybe between now and the next meeting, is it possible for you to try to get...
Oh, sure.
In touch with and find out how many cars are currently on site? I'd be curious to know also, what's that difference now? Because you've got 24 spaces?
Yes.
24 spaces? Again, some of those are meant for the commercial portion. But, you know, I'd be curious, what's the real difference now? We're talking about the potential cars on site that would have to come out or in to the site. I think that's the real number we need to know in terms of, can you think you can live with what that difference is? Because there are currently cars coming out of there right now.
Yeah.
There are currently cars going in there right now to some degree. So, it's trying to figure out what that difference is that I'd be interested in because then that's really my question.
Yeah, we can get that.
You've now going to have this many difference. How much of a problem is that potentially from where we were? I think the one thing you might have going for you a little bit here is you're not talking about it from scratch site. You know, that's just empty and whatever's coming is coming, you know, and you have no gauge. I mean, there is some gauge here to what's on the site as it is. So, I'd be interested in that. And all the units, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Ken Cran's traffic report kind of goes through that. I know you probably just received it late last week, but he goes through how many cars are leaving PPM, PKM, and his foresight, what he...
I know. The thing is that that's the traffic study and, you know, we have enough disagreement, not us, but, you know, when people, you know, did you do a traffic study? Then the traffic study tells us something. And, you know, people don't want to believe that we've been given numbers that make sense. I'm asking it kind of in a real-world perspective. Like, how many cars are going in and out of there right now?
Yeah.
Compared, you know, I don't want the little thing on the road with tires rolling over it. Tell me, just tell me how many people are there now so I can figure it out against how many people might be thereafter. All the units are single-bedroom units, right? So, you know, in terms of density in the units, we're talking pretty light in comparison to maybe some other projects we've seen, whether on 38 or not. We're more than likely talking about people who are not going to affect the schools, in effect.
I mean, the units are 845 square feet.
So, you know, that's a question that people have sometimes. You know, how is this going to affect the schools? You know, I don't think the single-family, single-bedroom units are likely to have that kind of an effect, so.
And, Mr. Chairman, it does address a, you know, housing needs run the wide spectrum of what people are looking for. And, you know, one-bedroom units fulfill a niche requirement that people wish that they could find one-bedrooms in town, want to stay in town. And this, you know, again, this is part of, what you look for is a wide range of opportunities and because there's a lot of different people want to stay here, come here, whatever the situation is, and this could reach, this could meet a need that's not currently available, so.
And, you know, I think if this was any other site almost, there'd be very few of these concerns at all. It really just comes down to, I think, you know, at least for me, it's going to come down to, how does it work? The ins and the outs is going to be the ultimate, I think, decider on this because it's pretty low in terms of, you know, the amount of people that are going to be in the building, of how many you're adding. You know, so those really aren't my biggest concerns because of, you know, the type of units you're talking about. It's really going to be, how does it work? Pleasant Street is Pleasant Street. You know, so that's the biggest concern of how it fits, so. Other than that, I'm all set for now. The rest of it's some of the, you know, the information you've got to get back to the building inspector on and whatnot. So, anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns? Why don't we just go left across the room? So, we'll start here, one, two, three. Does that work? Could you state your name and address for the record? The floor is yours.
Douglas Sears, 80 Geiger Drive. I'm president of the Historical Society here in town. The executive committee has voted to be in favor of this proposal. This is one of the most beautiful houses in town. There was, Mr. Fowler, a beautiful house, as you recall, at that gas station, which went out about forty or so years ago.
Yep.
And we are trying to keep what we have. It's a generous proposal that the Tuxbury Historical Society have a home there and certainly is pleasing to its members and to its board. And what I understand about the project from listening here is that we have some great minds here who'll be able to figure out all of the flow and the traffic and all those things. And I'm really looking forward to seeing this come into being and continue to... I think it's, by the way, great that Mr. Sullivan has figured out a way to be able to preserve this building. It costs money to do this and not go very far from, you know, its intended purpose of all of the structure and do it in such a way that really blends with what we're trying to do as a community here in the center of town. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, Bruce Chet, 30 Lucille Drive. I have a question for the folks that are making the presentation. This is about the nature of the free Historical Society space. Is that going to be free of any cost forever? Or is there escalations, operating expenses? What's the free? I want to understand how free it is.
Well, it will be a matter of that we will be in discussion with the Historical Society in action. I would hope that by the next meeting that I will have had a discussion with Attorney Sears and we'll get down into detail exactly what the format would be. But the expectation is it's not going to be condominiums, we're not going to be transferring title to a condominium unit, but it would be, my expected format is going to be in terms of a long-term leasehold agreement with them. And it would be basically, you know, they'll have to pay for their utilities and things incidental to the usage of the space itself. But other than that, you know, that's going to be the role of it. And we'll, I'll have a discussion with Attorney Sears and, you know, by the next meeting, we should have, you know, everything, you know, pretty definitive as to the format. But my expectation is going to be long-term leasehold interest. That would just continue to run.
So, I'm sorry, maybe I just didn't understand because I don't listen really well. But did you say that utilities would be free or they would pay the utility?
No, 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 they're not going to pay the utilities. You know, so it would be whatever, you know, the typical expenses that one would have incidental to, you know...
Rent.
Yeah, you know, it wouldn't be rent per se, it would be, yeah, you pay rent and then you also pay your, you know, cable, electric, you know, whatever. They're going to have telephone, I don't even know if people have telephones anymore. But, you know, that's...
So, that's their own personal decision, what they choose, but they're not going to pay any building operating expenses. No share of taxes, no share of the insurance on the building, et cetera, et cetera. So, from a landlord's point of view, it's a total free ride.
It's a gift.
Great, I love it, thank you.
Sir, Mr. Puckett, before you go. So, utilities will be free?
No.
No. Okay, well, he's saying that. He believes that.
No, no, he didn't. He said, "It's just rent."
No, no, he didn't. He said, it's just rent. The rent, rent-free, but utilities are their own responsibility.
Yeah, because, you know, they, you know, if they have coffee machines and, you know, as I say, God only knows what the office of tomorrow is going to look like.
Now, if I'd seen your shirt right away, I'd have let you go in first.
Go, you guys. Justin Marino. I live at seventeen Robinson Avenue, which is actually this parcel here. I think on one of the maps it showed commercial, but I think it's maybe zone overlay commercial, but it's residential at this time. I appreciate that they went ahead and put the arbor parties here. I appreciate that for privacy, where there will be more folks here than there are currently. There was a stone bound that was out here at the corner of the property, and I believe it was removed maybe accidentally as part of some exploration that went on. So if I could request that, that that be surveyed and that bound replaced, it was, it was the one that was right out in the corner here, and it's, it's been removed.
Just, may I just, on, on the plan, there's an indication that a stone bound was found right at the corner of your parcel, the north, most northerly, I guess, yeah, that would be the most northerly corner of your parcel. There is a stone bound found there.
It, it was there, but it was removed, and there was a hole in the ground, so I've put a cement paver in there to save the spot. It was somehow gone.
Check that out.
I should say granite paver. Thank you.
He had low paper, but we'll, we'll pick him up.
Perfect. Thank you. Other thought is just on the, the arbor parties there, I'm wondering if it's possible to do an eight-foot fence? I know it's proposed six. Is it possible to just do eight, just as a little more, so it's just less likely that, you know, people are kind of looking over into the backyard? Is that possible?
Usually six.
Well, we have the, well, we have the question of zoning.
It's too high.
I think that you have the ability to allow
Well, I was just discussing it. We'll, we'll check on it.
Okay.
Sometimes it's depending on where the property is, like what zones it's in. But in the event that we have the ability to give you a waiver for a larger fence, if that's what people would want, then fine.
If anyone wants eight feet, would be glad to give eight feet.
So we'll, we'll check on that.
Yep. Okay, appreciate that. Thank you. Had a, a question about the pavement. So right now, you know, a lot of this existing site is not paved, and, and there's obviously going to be a lot more pavement than that's there. And I, I do see that there's the one storm drain down towards the end here, and I know that that is, there's, there is like a gentle slope that heads down that direction. My concern is that on Robinson Ave, for example, there are three storm drains out in front of my house, and I go out there probably once a week or every two weeks, and, you know, leaves or grass or whatever else gets in there. My concern is that one storm drain is going to back up, and it's all going to just continue down into the yard, because this is now impervious. Whereas now, there's no flooding issue, because it just goes through the, the grass. So I'm wondering if that can be at least considered. I know there's some sort of underground pond or something, but, you know, at the very least, is there a way to, to add more catch basins to, to go ahead and make it less likely that, that that overflows? Or even use permeable pavement is something that I've seen at other places, where that way it's not all going to one spot, and maybe it's just, you know, going down where, where it rains more so. Just, just a thought.
We can look into adding more catch basins, but inevitably, if one clogs, they're all going to clog. They should be, there's an O and N plan, Operation Maintenance Plan, that the owner should check the catch basins every so often. I think it's put in four times a year, clean out the, the, the catch basin should have a four-foot sump. So if we put in the O and N plan, if the sump is with two feet full of silt, it should be cleaned out empty, so.
And I agree with you there, but if there are six inches of leaves on the top, then some, it doesn't matter. That's what I see out of Robinson Ave, so, you know, if it's covered, it's just gonna, it's not going to drain. That's, that's the thought. So multiple may help, or maybe permeable pavement is a thought. And then I, the, the last comment I have is just on the dumpster. I know there were thoughts about the truck and things, and, you know, whether it backs into the street, and I understand that. Personally, I like it a little bit further away, so that I may not smell it as much. I'll just maybe something to consider. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Questions, comments, concerns? All right, hearing none. Bring it back to the board. Does the board have anything else to add this time? Nope? All right. Mr. Plunkett, would I suspect the next meeting?
Yes, and, and, Mr. Chairman, just to address some of the concerns, you know, in terms of the snow removal, we have absolutely no issue pertaining to a condition saying that in the event that, you know, the snow storage areas are to the maximum, then it'll be the obligation of the owner to remove the snow from the site. You know, again, we pointed out that it's, it's really just a net four units for the build-out, and that this build-out in terms of construction, we're probably looking at next spring at
Well, as soon as possible, because I know that Route thirty-eight is going to undergo a major reconstruction, so, right, we're going to go as soon as we can.
And, but, but even with that, going as quickly as possible with the expected move of the fire department, that at the time of completion of the build-out, the transfer of the station from the current site over to the new site should have been finalized at that point in time. But in this intervening period, we'll be responding to the town engineer and have further information, and also relative to the request of the fire department on letting you provide us tonight, and, and just, you know, Mr. Cram will be present at the next, we anticipate that will be present at the next meeting.
All right. All right, so with that, the next time is seven twenty on the thirteenth. So do I have a motion to continue this to seven twenty on nine thirteen? A motion made and seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. All right, we'll see you at the next meeting.
Thank you very much.
Steve. For the rest of them? Absolutely. Tell her I said hi when he's here. Big check. All right, I think we can do these while on our own here. So moving on to Agenda Item E, thirty East Street. The petitioner has requested that we continue this till nine thirteen, and they are already on here for, or penciled in for seven fifteen on nine thirteen. So do I have a motion to continue?
So moved.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Moving on to Agenda Item F, four sixty-one Main Street. That applicant has also requested to continue to nine thirteen, and that one would be seven ten on nine thirteen. So do I have a motion?
I'm moved.
I have a motion made, so I have a second. Motion made and seconded. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Both of those continued. All right, well, we'll start getting towards Agenda Item G, which is the first one, Agenda Item G one, which is fifteen eighty-three Andover Street, non-substantial change determination.
Good evening, Chairman. For the record, Matt here, I'm with Lamplex Engineering in Lowell. So we're here this evening to address a condition of the special permit for fifteen eighty-three Andover Street, and the condition was to provide a, a walkway that would be ADA compliant to the adjoining property which has the daycare facility. And we provided a, a walkway design that also was reviewed by the building department, and the, went through planning, and they determined that it would need to come before the board, to get the board's approval on the walkway connection to the daycare, and that's why we're here this evening, to, to have a non-substantial change made to the condition of the special permit. And I have copies of the plans. Each of the board member will need to copy the plan.
All right. We'll start with Mr. Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I review the plans. I have no problems with the, the walkway proposal as, as submitted at fifteen eighty-three Andover Street.
I'm all set. Mr. Delaney?
I'm all set as well. I don't have a problem with the walkway and the way it's presented.
Mr. Ryder?
Um, I don't, I just had one question. I was at the property the other day. What is going to be the backside? Is that just going to be grass tapered off? Because right now, there's still shrubbery that
Yeah, that'll all be landscape.
Okay, that's landscaped out. Okay. There was a question I, actually, a resident stopped me and asked me, that they watched this, and they were asking about that, what was going to be done in the back there?
Yeah.
So, okay, answer my question. Great, thank you.
Mr. Fowler?
And I am all set on this.
Chair is as well. All right, so first, we need to determine whether or not we find this to be a non-substantial change. So do I have a motion for that?
The chairman will make a motion that this is not a non-substantial change.
This is a non-substantial change, all right.
Second.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries in the end of this meeting. Now, as to the non-substantial change itself, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
So the motion to approve the non-substantial change as submitted and in accordance with the plan submitted? That works. All right, so I have a motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries in the end of this meeting. All set. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much, everyone. Number
Thank you.
That was easy.
Yeah, that was easy.
Well, that one should be easy.
That's the easiest one you've had in a long time.
Yes. They're all fun.
Only they were all like that. All right, moving on to Agenda Item D two, sixteen sixty-eight Shawshin Street, non-substantial change determination. State your name for the record. The floor is yours.
Good evening, everyone. Patrick McCarty, McCarty Engineering, here tonight requesting a non-substantial change determination for sixteen sixty-eight Shawshin Street, which is the home of Wild and Local Meats. They are proposing a fourteen-foot by fifteen-foot square concrete pad to house a CO2 tank. We submitted a plan. We have a copy here on the top of the plan is the entire site, and the bottom of the plan is a zoom-in of the proposed pad, which is here on the street side of the building, in between the existing transformer and air conditioning units. The fire lane does come around that side of the building, so as part of this, we're proposing just to straighten out that kink in the fire lane, so that we have clearance, adequate clearance from the proposed pad.
Okay.
So, any questions, we're happy to answer.
All right, we'll start on the other side and go around. Mr. Ryder?
I do not have any questions at this time.
All set. Mr. Vitale?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now, would you be putting any bollards there, so nobody will hit that tank?
Uh, yes. Included in the submission was the plans from the structural engineer that designed the pad, and they have a barrier shown on their plans.
You do? Good, okay. I'm all set. Thank you.
Mr. Delaney?
All set.
All right. The chair is all set as well. We had, we had the memo from the town planner as well, just giving us the heads up on how we felt about that as well, so. Same as before, first need the motion on whether or not we determine this to be a non-substantial change.
I'll make a motion to determine it is a non-substantial change.
All right, I have a motion made. Motion made and seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Now, as to the non-substantial change request?
Make a motion to approve the non-substantial change request.
Second. Motion made and seconded, incorporating the plan as well.
Incorporating the plan and with that.
All right. And so we have the motion made and seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations, by the way, on Town Hall. I hadn't presented here since, like, two thousand and fifteen, when you were down the street in the
It feels like it's almost been that long since we've been in here.
Yeah, it looks, it looks great.
It looked great, didn't it?
Yeah, it really did.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
All right, moving on to Agenda Item G three, which is a citizen petition discussion.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi, my name is Chris Mullins. This is Paige Imping.
Hi.
I'm sorry, could you, if you wouldn't mind, would you just say, because I don't want to make, make sure anybody who needs to hear the names of the people presenting
Yes, Paige Imping.
Um, I'd like to thank everyone here for the opportunity for us to inform you of an article that residents
Actually, I think I just need to make a clarification, because I don't want to make, I want to make sure nobody gets confused. We hold public hearings for certain petitions that come in. This is not one of those.
Correct.
This is not something that would normally be before our board, because it's not zoning or whatever. This is a petition outside of our realm for holding public hearings. The petitioners are just simply coming in as a courtesy to present the article in front of us, because it pertains to the board. That way, no one at home gets confused. It's not a public hearing, and as such, any public comment wouldn't be allowed the way it would be for a public hearing. The chair can choose to allow people to speak in things that are not a public hearing, and if there were anyone here wishing to speak, I would do so. That was my plan this evening. I don't see any extra bodies in here, but I know sometimes that can get confusing for some people, that when things aren't a public hearing item, it's kind of in the chair's discretion if people get to speak at our meetings.
Sure.
But I just wanted to make sure that was clarified, so no one gets confused by that. Okay.
Uh, yes, as, as Mr. Johnson said, this is, this is a courtesy notification being extended to the board, and although the board was provided with the language of the article in advance of this meeting, I would like to read that language, and it is as follows. "To see if the town will vote to change the length of a term of an elected planning board seat from five years to three years, as provided for in Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-one, Section eighty-one A. Current planning board members may fulfill their terms, and any member elected after adoption would serve a three-year term. Any appointments to the board for a vacated seat would fulfill the term of the vacated seat." Mrs. Imping, do you have anything to add?
I don't. Just wanted to provide the opportunity and the courtesy for the board to know that we were bringing this forward to special town meeting.
Okay, so, all right. So, uh, uh, if the other board members don't mind, normally I would go around and go last, but if you don't mind, I'm going to go first. I, I may confused by this, I'll be honest, because I don't understand the, the purpose with the way it's stated anyways, because, you know, we've already had some discussion on this, because it's been brought forward once. I'm confused a little bit in the, what's the criteria that the petitioners are using for this? Not, I don't mean what's your ability to bring it forward. I mean, what is the criteria of how it's being presented that it's necessary? Because I'm confused by some of the information that's been submitted, because it seems in some cases that we're being compared to cities who don't even elect their planning boards. They appoint them, in some of the information that's been put forward. In other cases, there's references to towns who have boards the same size and five years as being the ones being spoken to, to get information on this. So I, I'm confused, because I don't understand, you know, where the, where the criteria is to try to make a, have a conversation about why you would want to change the, the planning board here. An example of what, what confuses me is, I've looked into it, and I've looked at all the cities and towns in Massachusetts, and, see if I add it here, the reference point here, but I came up with ninety-six out of the three hundred and fifty-one that do three-year elected terms. That's twenty-seven percent of the state. Forty-four of those ninety-six are in towns with populations that have less than ten thousand people. Fifty-eight of them, sixty percent, are in towns of less than fifteen thousand, and seventy-two of the ninety-six are in towns with twenty-eight or less thousand people. So, for an example, some of the towns that you'd be comparing Tuxbury to in making this change are Monroe, Mass., population one hundred and twenty-one people. Heath, Mass., population seven hundred and six. Hold on, sorry. Author's note. I'm sorry, speaker's note, I guess it would be here. When I say the populations of these peop, these places came out, I apologize for not having the exact count of each of these towns. Like, when I refer to Tewksbury having thirty thousand people, I'm saying round the thirty thousand, I'm not trying to say Tewksbury has exactly thirty thousand people. I'd hate to have to be corrected on giving a number that might seem like I'm saying there's exactly thirty thousand people in Tewksbury. So when I use these numbers, they're pretty close to correct, but if they're off by a little, I apologize in advance. Florida, Mass., population seven hundred and fifty two. Petersham, Mass., population one hundred, uh, one thousand two hundred and thirty four. So, I don't see how that, that kind of comparison makes sense when you give sort of the vague comment of, well, other people do it, or other places do it. Who are the other places? Another example being that two of the, two of the towns that were referenced in some of the materials submitted before were Bill Ricker and Chelmsford. Um, yes, they both have three year terms. Both of those boards, however, don't have five members, which alleviates at least one of the concerns I've tried to explain, which is with less than, with only five members, and you put two up at the same time, you put in jeopardy the ability of the board to vote if both members become new members, because they haven't been here for the potentially months worth of hearings that have been held. When you have a board bigger than five, which, if I came up with the correct count, of those ninety six, twenty five at least of them have more than five members, which means they don't have that problem when they have two members up for election each year. So it's not as big an issue, because there are still five at least, some of them have nine members. So several of those members are going, five of those members at least are gonna be able to vote, which is more than you need for a super majority vote, even if the other two members can't vote. You can't do that with a five member board. So that becomes a problem. Bill Ricker, you know, and, you know, I'm kinda jumping around here, but Bill Ricker and Chelmsford have put up multiple different times as comparisons, cause they're nearby. Chelmsford has had exactly one competitive race in the last ten years with a three year term. Two less than we've had, by the way. Bill Ricker has had the same numbers we've had with a three year term. Our own school committee has had exactly the same number of competitive races over the last ten years as our board has. I'm curious where the petition is to reduce their terms to one or two years to get that competition going and the access that we need, because clearly it's not working for them either. Um, but I don't foresee that coming forward. Um, you know, I, I just, I, I don't get, what I have at least coming out of the last time is, and I, I mean, these are vague and I won't hold you to them being the absolute explanation for this, but the arguments, as I understood them, uh, the five year terms of office is the main and most problematic issue that prevents more people from trying to run to serve on the planning board. I'm not gonna get into the argument again about access versus competition. This is not about access, because if it's about access, what you're saying is either the town clerk is preventing people from getting on the ballot who want to, or we aren't following the, the public meeting laws and allowing people, people to speak on the, uh, our agenda items, the public, the public portions of those. If either of those two things are true, please let me know. But other than that, it's not an access issue, it's a competition issue. You're trying to contr, you're trying to create more competition. I would suggest that you're not gonna get the competition you're suggesting for just this, just by doing this, because Chelmsford's had three year terms, they've had one competitive race in a decade, okay? Your own school committee, same issue, you know, I, I'm not sure what the problem is then, it might have something to do with whether or not people really want to serve on the boards, and the length of term isn't really the biggest problem. Um, you know, the other, you can, we can do it, yeah, sure, you can do a lot of things. You could jump off the Tobin Bridge, but I would suggest that if you thought about it for a second, you wouldn't do it, you know, but you could, not a good idea. Um, there'll be more competition, I already went through that one, there are no extenuating consequences from changing from five years to three. Now, I gotta ask, you know, and again, I'm not gonna expect any answers to this, but I gotta at least ask, are the petitioners under the impression that the majority of the state has either not noticed that they have a planning board term of like five years for their members, and yet maybe their other boards, like the Board of Selectmen or a school committee, don't? It's just they've overlooked the fact? Or is it possible that there's a reason why these boards might have longer terms than other boards within those towns? Cause it seems strange to me to think that basically three quarters of the state hasn't noticed that their planning board term might be different than their Board of Selectmen or their town, city councilors or something like that for how often they have to run. I mean, maybe that's true, I suppose they may have just overlooked it, but I have a feeling that it has more to do with the fact that it was purposeful, that the terms were set at five years, and in some of these very small towns, I did reference Florida, Mass., on their website, they hold two scheduled planning board meetings per year. We do that per month. So it is possible that we are different than the town of Florida, Massachusetts. I could be wrong, and I'm sure they probably schedule other meetings as necessary throughout the year, but their website said that they only schedule two. That doesn't seem quite comparable to us, being that we do that in a month. Um, and, you know, I, I, it's kind of a moving target for me, because in the information submitted, you know, sometimes you have things like, you know, there are cities just lopped into the who did we speak to list of towns. I mean, the, the, the stuff that was submitted to the finance committee last time listed, I think it was twenty, hmm, twenty, how many? Twenty something different towns listed in it. And, I mean, I could be mis, but the way the thing was presented, it almost seemed like those were the cities and towns that were spoken to who agreed with this idea. And in that list, there's at least twelve of the twenty, I think it's twenty four of the list, who actually have five member boards with five year terms. So I'm just wondering if the information that's being put forward is being conveyed in a way that people understand that when they, when the petition is saying we spoke to these places, that you're not also saying that they're necessarily agreeing with this because they haven't changed it? They have exactly that kind of, and also mixed into that, by the way, were, uh, let's see, I think it was five cities, four of which appoint their planning boards. So I'm not really sure why they're being referenced. In another portion, the, the towns that were spoken to about this, I believe, were, um, I think it was Ipswich, and forget who the other one was, Ipswich and Dedham. Well, Ipswich and Dedham both have five member, five year terms. Odd that they're the ones spoken to about how, how good three year terms are. I don't think, I looked, either one of them has put forward a, uh, uh, an article for their town meeting to change their terms. Also, Ipswich doesn't elect their planning board they appointed, so I don't know why they would have any comment at all, or any research done on whether or not three year terms are better than five year terms, but, I mean, I suppose you could talk to anybody. Um, let's see, what else? Oh, one of the other quotes that was putting it, put in, was put in from Norfolk. Let me see if I got this right, I think it was Norfolk. That, that the town, someone from the town in the planning department apparently was quoted as saying that they think that three year terms are good. Um, I mean, that's fine, except for the fact that, I gotta find my page, but Norfolk has, I'm trying to find it, I apologize, there's so many things here that, you know, I don't understand, but Norfolk is a fraction the size of Tewksbury, so I'm not really sure why Norfolk is the one being quoted as, you know, deciding whether or not five years versus three. I mean, it's not, it's, it's got about ten thousand people in it. So I, I'm confused because I don't understand the, the basis of the, of the reasoning, because I don't understand what the real comparisons are. I mean, when you say other people do it, who? When you say reach has, reach, research has been done by certain towns, where is it? As of right now, the only, the only thing I'm, I'm getting from this is we can do it, and other people are doing it. Well, I've already mentioned the idea of jumping off a bridge, but, you know, there isn't a parent in the world who would be okay with some, with, with their kids saying, but other people are doing it, as the sole justification for whether or not it should be okay. I, I would think a bit more than that would make sense. The same thing was ready to come forward, I heard it in the public hearings for this same thing the last time. There's no numbers backing any of this up. I had to go through three hundred and fifty one cities and towns, so that I have the stuff to contradict non comments, things that weren't even mentioned, because the only way to try to combat the fact that this doesn't, I don't know why this makes sense, is to come up with all the numbers myself, because there are no numbers coming forward. There's just simply vague comments, and it makes things the same as other boards, or we can do it. I mean, those are all true statements. I just question whether or not, if put up against the numbers, any of those things would really hold water. I'll be honest, and I will be completely transparent, I do not believe that the real reason for many of the proponents of this article are the ones that have been put forward. I think it's the issue that they have with this board. I think it's been the inability, apparently, to find people who want to run for this board against people who are on it, and/or the inability to beat any of the people on the board at the time if you run against them. And that this is an attempt to shorten the timeframe so that there'll be more elections, which just raises the amount of times you might be able to do that, for no other reason than that, which is that you don't like some of the things either this board has done or the people on it. Because to say that it's being done to increase competition with nothing that backs that up, and honestly, I believe I found things that are the contrary to that, that just simply changing the term is going to change any of that, and ignoring the fact that there might be valid reasons why this board serves longer. I mean, there's an election for this board, one member every single year, because there's five of us, we're up every, somebody's up every year. Someone could run to be on the board. If people are not choosing to do that, shortening the term, ask Chelmsford, ask Bill Ricker, ask our school committee, having a three year term isn't necessarily gonna change that at all, but I don't know if that's really the real reason behind this article at all. And I'll be honest that I think that. I don't say that any of the other board members do, but I believe that, because I've gone through all these numbers, I've had conversations with people, and it doesn't seem to matter what's said, it just wants to plow it forward, just with the vagueness of, well, we can. Okay, yeah, you can. I think it would be a detriment to the town in its current form to do this, because shortening the terms and having two members up at the same time with a five member board for a town with approximately thirty thousand residents, with the business that this board has to do, with the amount of information, the packages that we have, to have two people potentially coming in multiple years in a row, when things could have been going on for months, is a problem. It's not a problem probably for Florida, Massachusetts, just a guess, cause they don't have very many people. So my guess is they don't have nearly the amount of business going on that a town this size does. One of the other boards was, went even further, was, was changed into an appointed board in this town. They couldn't even keep five people on it, so they had to change it to three people. So now, one of the other boards, for a town of thirty thousand people, has three people voting on it. So, you know, one person per ten thousand here in town, making the decisions on that board, because, you know, the slow sort of movement to making that board appointed instead of elected the way it used to be, there's where you end up. I suspect that this is meant as the first step to doing the same thing to this board, something that I do not think is in the best interest of this town. So, that's it for me. I'll go with Mr. Delaney.
I could just clarify.
Yeah, um-
Mr. Chairman, could I just clarify one thing? The only information that was submitted to this board was the wording of the article for special town meeting.
There was information submitted the last time this article was put forward, correct?
This article has been modified, and it is being presented for special town meeting.
So I'm sorry, is anything I just said inaccurate?
The information that you were reading from is not information that we were, that the proponents submitted.
I, I did say you did. You submitted an article.
Oh.
My comments are from my own research.
That's an art-
As well as, and included in that research-
Would you read that into the record, that that is your article?
I'm saying it, if you let, if you let me finish, I'll tell you right now. That-
Excuse me?
My research included-
One person has the floor.
My research included the last time that an article just like this was submitted, and the information that was submitted in connection with that article. So I'm referring to things that have already been submitted. Now, they may not have been submitted yet on this newest version, but my, my comments don't change, because this article is all but identical to the last version. So when I'm saying I've done the research, I've researched what was submitted to the finance committee, and that's what I'm referencing. Those are the comments that were made in the presentations, and information that was sent into the finance committee. So I'm not pulling it out of thin air.
I'm not suggesting you are, but the document that you're reading from is your own writing, not something that the proponents submitted, and I just wanna make that clear.
A proponent, which is what I said. It was put forward by a proponent of the article.
I just wanted to be clear for the audience and for the record, that what you're reading from is not from the proponents.
That's fine. I will, I will stipulate, again, and I'm sure I'll find it in the next article written in the newspaper, I'm submitting, or I'm, I'm sorry, I'm agreeing that some of the stuff that I researched included information that was submitted during the last town meeting, when this, when an article like this was put forward by similar proponents for a similar purpose. But my comments don't change, because I still think all the same problems exist in this version, that version, or any of the versions where there isn't any information that backs up that request, other than the fact that it can be done. So I'm pointing out why I think it, it would be a bad idea for it to be done, and that included information that was submitted before as support for an article just like this. So I'll stipulate to that. Do you need any, is there, I mean, if there's anything in there you feel I'm giving that's inaccurate?
Thank you, I just wanted to, want to be clear that all that was submitted to the planning board for their review was the-
I am certain, I am certain that when this is written up in the paper, much like the last time, that there are any author notes that need to be added to correct anything I've said, as opposed to anything that anyone on that side of the table says, I'm sure we'll find them in there.
That's not related to the article, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to be clear that the proponents for this meeting, out of courtesy, wanted to submit the wording of the article, because it was pointed out last time that the board was not provided the courtesy of being notified, which is out of the normal course of process for a citizen article to be brought forward, however, out of courtesy, we are bringing it forward so that you will be notified that it is going to be submitted. There's no surprise.
We appreciate it being brought forward, but it was my impression that it was being brought forward to allow for a discussion, which is why I'm now going around the table to see if any of the other members have anything to add, but I wasn't, I didn't realize, if it was your intention, I apologize, if you just intended to tell us what the article was, and that was the end of it. I apologize.
No, I, I wanted-
I thought it was meant to be more of a-
I wanted clarification that the document you were reading from was not information that was submitted for this meeting.
No, it's my own research, because I'm telling you, these are the numbers I came up with.
Thank you, yes, that's, thank you.
So, and it's based on researching all the cities and towns in the state, it's based on information that was previously submitted for a similar article at the last town meeting on the proponent's side of the article. So this is my point, I guess what I'm getting at, is that this information comes in vaguely, without any, like, you know, information that's specific to anything, so it's really difficult to try to argue about the validity of doing this when such vague information is provided as the reasoning. And that's really, really much of my point, which is, as opposed to looking at all of those and coming up with the numbers, the alternative seems to be these vague statements of, we can, other people do it. I, I, you know, that seems, I don't know, that just sort of seems wanting in terms of an explanation, and that was what I was trying to point out. But again, I'll move on to other members of the board and see if anybody else has any comments. Mr. Delaney?
Yeah, first of all, the original thing was, I thought, years ago, the town fathers put this thing together as five members and to replace one member on the board per year. This thing isn't broken, why are you trying to fix it? You don't fix broken, you fix broken things. This is not broken. This system works. If you've been elected to the planning board and you're the first member in with four people that have already been there, do you know how difficult it is to adapt as one person? Never mind have two people in that have to try to adapt to the same thing. It's a difficult, difficult situation when you first come in here to learn what a stormwater is. You people have no idea what it takes to be on this board, what this board does to protect the people in the town of Tewksbury. You have no- You have no idea. If you can make a statement, three people, three people, you're lying to yourself. Because that's not the way this board works. This board works with honesty and does the best that they can do for the town of Tewksbury. You want to replace two members? That's only chaos. You replace one member, the one member's got a chance to catch up, and the board that's sitting here has a chance to work with you. But if you have two members replaced that don't really have a good idea of what's going on, all you do is delay, delay, delay. It's as simple as that. This thing isn't broken. I'm going to say it one more time. This thing isn't broken. I don't know why you're trying to fix it. I really don't. It's beyond me why anybody would come in here and try to change something that works. This planning board works, and we work hard. See it? That's just tonight. You have no idea what you're talking about. I'm done.
Mr. Fratelli?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can I ask some questions to you guys as far as petitioners?
Appreciate it, yeah.
Okay. So, one question I have is, why did you withdraw the article last, last meeting? Last town meeting?
You know, the petitioners received phone calls and pushback from board members in the community questioning the validity of the article, even though it was followed to the letter, the process, bringing forward a citizen petition. The board had mentioned, several boards had mentioned that they didn't feel that enough outreach was done, even though we followed the rules for a citizen article for annual town meeting. So we decided as a group that we would go back and revisit the article, provide outreach, provide courtesy notification, so that that wouldn't be something that could be pointed to. And that's why we did it.
Okay. Seems to me, just sitting here tonight, you haven't presented much as far as how this is going to work. You want to change it from five years to three years. Okay, I understand that, right? I mean, why? And why are you singling out the planning board rather than every other board in town? Because you're not doing it across the board in Tewksbury.
I don't know what you mean by across the board.
You want to make all the boards in town three years of three-year commitments, three-year elective positions, correct?
The article is seeking to change the planning board term from five years to three years.
Yeah, to bring it up to the same specs as selectmen, school committee.
As any other three-year board in the town.
Okay. But there's two boards in town that are five-year terms.
Right, this is matching any three-year board in the town if you read the wording of the article.
Okay. So why not do it across the board is my question, to all elected officials in town.
Right, so, for example, do you have a board that you would like to put as an example?
Well, there's two boards in town that have five-year commitments, correct?
Which two boards?
The planning board, right?
Yes, yes.
And I believe the other one is the housing authority.
Right, the housing authority is legislated to be a five-year term. The planning board is legislated to be a three- or five-year term.
Okay.
Right, so if you look at, you know, MGL, chapter 121b, section 5, the text there is actually, "Housing and redevelopment authorities' membership appointment election term of office hereafter as the term of a member of any housing or redevelopment authority expires, his successor shall be appointed or elected in the same manner and by the same body for a term of five years from such expiration." We're not asking to change that because we simply can't change that.
Okay. So, just for the record, you know what happened the last time? You submitted the article February 19th, right, to the town of Tewksbury?
Yes, we followed the process for submitting a citizen article for annual town meeting.
Were you aware of when we were notified of the article?
The planning board is not, any board is not required, any citizen article is not required to notify any board of its submission.
I understand that. But don't you think it'd be common courtesy on your behalf to notify the planning board that we're trying to change your position from five years to three years?
But we're not trying to change the position of any existing seat. It would be future seats as they come.
Doesn't make a difference. It's still the position of the planning board. You're going to be affecting members of this planning board who will like to run on their next, on next appointment.
As would be true in any election.
True, I agree. But the common courtesy is what I, what bothers me, the fact that you've, nobody on your, on your end notified the planning board.
We're here tonight for special town meeting. Excuse me, Mr. Fratelli. That's, that's happened. Annual town meeting is in the books. We are submitting a new petition for special town meeting. We're following the process. In fact, we're stepping outside of the process, and we are providing the planning board, as they asked, outside of the process, the courtesy of notification.
So you're providing this five, this, this meeting tonight to tell us you're submitting the article? With no.
Absolutely.
What?
That's right.
You're submitting it, but with no background as to why?
There's no requirement to provide.
There's no requirement, I understand. It's Tewksbury.
Well, no, this is the process, but from the Secretary of State's office for citizen articles.
Okay. All right, Mr. Chairman, I'm all set.
Mr. Rod?
Thank you. You know, I'll be honest, three years, five years, it, you know, really doesn't matter to me. But, somebody that deals with this day in, day out, every single day, and has for the last 26 years, there's a learning curve. And, and I could understand if there was a number of people stepping up in this town for boards. There is not. I think the last contested election was probably mine, when I ran for the board. And there's a big learning curve, as this board states. Bringing two new members on that may or may not have the background, that could impact a project. Whether it be a town project, it could have been a, a, one of the biggest apartment projects that's going in right now that's been discussed at the last selectman meeting. If that happened in the middle of an election, and a board member, two members had changed, there is a significant setback to the project, the work that the current board sitting did versus, there's a big learning curve, what needs to be done. Not saying it can't be done, but there is a big learning curve. And I do appreciate that you're coming forward tonight to bring the article to. And I understand that it's a citizen petition, and I deal with those annually. And I know it's not the process. But sometimes, whether it's the process or not the process, the right thing to do would be to come in front of the board. And that was my issue with. And I was one of those phone calls. My concern was, and I was respectful in doing it, and my concern was that the people that signed that petition sat on boards in this town and did not call any member of this board. That's I had an issue with. That's a big concern with me. Because if I signed a petition against any sitting board member in this town, before I signed anything, I'd give those board members a common courtesy in the respect as a fellow board member, an elected official in this town, a common courtesy phone call to say, this is what's happening out there, whether you like it or not. I think it's the right thing to do. I don't think it's the right thing to do, but I'm going to sign the petition. That was my biggest concern. I think from a citizen petition, it's you follow the process. But affecting a board that has been elected, that puts a lot of time and effort, I think that extra step should have been taken. So, thank you.
And if I could clarify, this is not against any member of the board. This is a forward-thinking article. This is not about any member of the board. And I really want to emphasize that there is utmost respect for the work that goes on for all of the boards in the communities. I myself have been on an elected board. So I completely understand. The level of information that's reviewed by this board is intense. There's no question about that. That is not what the article is about. And I just want to be clear. This is not about any member of the board.
I'm all set. Thank you.
Mr. Fowler?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I want to apologize for having to use my finger, my knuckles as a mallet, but I think both sides of the table were out of order at that time. You were talking over one another, and nothing gets done that way. So I apologize if you were shocked by that. Right? Okay. Having said that, I find this, my first question was, and I've heard it asked three times already this evening, why? We haven't heard a reason. I mean, you can talk the general laws and all that, but the why hasn't been answered. I think maybe you touched on it now, when, when the thoughts are, it's not aimed at any particular member or person. That's sort of an answer of the why. That's not why not. But the problem I'm having with this is, our members have, have five. Some of our votes require four members. It's called a supermajority, and that's state statute. You could have, on any given evening, two members that have only sat on this board one or two or three meetings, not knowing what that is being discussed, having to vote on a supermajority, which requires the four members. So is that person going to guess? Is that person going to know what they're talking about or know what they're answering for? I'll take, and tell you this. This is a thin package. Our package is usually two or three times that thick. It takes a lot of background work, a lot of information, a lot of communication with the, the planning, the planning office, not only the planning board, but the conservation commission, the building inspector's office. It's not something you just say, oh, I'm going to go to the meeting. We used to have a couple of members that did that. They would come here, they'd get their package. They'd come here and pull their package out, seven o'clock on the night of the meeting, and start reading it. And they're reading it as it's going on. How can you be prepared by doing something like that? I couldn't understand it. Maybe I'm a little slower. I have to take a few hours to digest all of these things, write notes such as that, so that I'll be able to communicate with the petitioners. Because they're here with questions and discussion so that we can come up with the best package, the best plan possible. I don't see, I, I think I know the answer to this question. Have you thought about the first year or two, when people are transitioning out of the five-year term to three, and the two coming in? How that's going to be laid out? How many members are going to be there? And you can't say, oh, it'll be two, two, and one. Because that's from the beginning. This isn't the beginning. This is in the middle of the road. We're going from one a year to two a year, and it depends upon the turn. You might, I don't think you'd have three. But you'd have an awful hard time having consistent members here at all times. I, I just don't see how this would work. Hate to say it. But I don't think, from your side of the table, that the work has been done to foresee what's going to happen based on the needs of the board, the needs of Tewksbury. So, I, I'm not even going to ask the question, because it's not going to work. I've got the answers myself. So, I'm all set.
Thank you, Mr. Fowler. When we started this, there was nobody else other than, I think, the press in the room. There are a few other folks. And I did say, if there was anybody who wished to speak, I would let them, even though it's not a public hearing. So I want to stick to that. It wasn't an empty offer, just because the room was empty. But if anybody wishes to get up, feel free. I'm not forcing you, I'm just allowing it. Why?
You know, first of all.
I'm sorry, I do need you, though, to give your name and your address, though, just so the record picks it up.
Bruce Schick, 30 East Hill Drive.
Thank you.
I'm someone in the same camp as Mr. Ryder over there. I spent 25 years in corporate real estate, reviewing plans, doing real estate deals, et cetera. And I understand the work that you do is very difficult. And I, I've said that all along, this is not an easy board to be on. And I think that you've done some good things. Haven't paid much attention to what's going on. What have I been here? 27 years in town. I started to pay attention about eight years ago when I retired. And I, I think that the way we run the town is very participative. Town meeting doesn't get a lot of people. But, you know, the notion is that it's a citizen-run government, right? And you've got to have people who volunteer on these committees, et cetera, to do the work, or, you know, you're not going to get the work done. I don't know where we are in that continuum of, you know, too big to be town meeting, and whether we should have a different form of government or not. But I do think that when things appear to be less what the town people want, that you ought to be looking at ways to make it different slash better, right? Different isn't always better, and better isn't always different. Like, you've got to figure out, if people are not particularly happy with what's going on, what you can do that might make a positive change to the situation. So going from a five-year term to a three-year term, I believe, because you have a couple of people running at a time during at least two of the cycles, there's less reluctance on the part of other people to run for a board position. It's a really, you know, in a small town, It's really, you know, in a small town, you don't want to say, I'm running against Eric Reiner. But if there's two slots open, you're not running against that person or that person, you're running for the open slot. So what, you know, the underlying principle is to create an opportunity for more people to get involved. I think, you know, the comment about it's a difficult board and people are hard to come by and who don't know what they're doing, that may have changed too with 30,000 people in town. Because I think there must be a few people who have some idea what they're doing out there. But they're not encouraged to get involved because they don't want to be competing against an individual. And that's the small-town part of this. So if we do something that makes a change, so that more people get involved, hopefully that's a good thing and not a bad thing. But I, you know, I believe from getting petitions, you know, getting people to sign the petition, I was one of the people collecting signatures. They weren't asking questions that you asked. They weren't asking structural questions, you know, how's this going to work, so on and so forth. It's like, planning board? Oh, yeah. Sign right here. Very clear to me that they feel that something has to change. They don't know, they're not going through all this. They're not thinking about how to run the town. Thank God we have some people who are thinking about how to run the town, how to make it better. And thank God we have people like you that are actually out here doing the work. I do understand how hard your work is. But we got to figure out how to do it a little better and make it more responsive, so that the people know, wow, we really have our act together in this town, we're doing things right. And trust me, being in facilities for 25 years, I know you can never make everybody happy. So you kind of look for that middle zone where you haven't made too many people unhappy and you haven't made any real honest mistakes, huge mistakes, and cost people a lot of money. But I do think that it's a good idea to find a way to make this board open to new ideas, bring people in, increase the competition. I do have one question, because I don't understand the logic about having two new people on the board. They can vote, right? If you have two new people, there's no reason they can't vote. You're just saying they don't know enough about a particular project they have and informed.
Depending on what you mean, but there's a yes and a no to that, in that the rule of necessity would allow members to vote for things even if they otherwise wouldn't be able to. So we wouldn't be left, we wouldn't be left unable. But part of what was, we were commenting on was, as Mr. Fowler pointed out, was, you're talking about if you have two new members coming in, unlike other boards who work on a different type of timeframe, like the Board of Selectment, the budget happens when the budget happens every year. So you don't run the risk of bumping up into an election in the middle of something going on. But I think Mr. Fowler was pointing out was having two new members predicting two new members came in. Like, that's just assuming either sitting members didn't run or got beat, whatever. Those two members would come into a hearing that could have been going on for months. And if there's only three remaining members who've heard any of those items, the two new members have heard none and would be forced into a position, you know, assuming it's something that requires a fourth, fifth vote, to vote on an item potentially they have not had any reason to have heard anything about until they got here. That's the logistics. So you, like you pointed out, the difference between wanting to make a change because you think there should be a change versus how does that work, though? So that's, I think, what was being, I think Mr. Fowler was pointing it out with that. That's what he talked about, when two new members would come in, you'd have two out of five potentially having heard nothing on an item.
Potentially, but also they could come to these meetings, they could read the papers, they could watch the papers.
They could.
So they, they could inform themselves if they're going to get into a position, hopefully, right?
You would hope.
And I'm saying this as somebody who, you know, likes to think that I do my homework, is I was going to run for this board, I'd spend a lot of time paying attention to the issues and trying to get the information. I wouldn't just show up day one, go, all right, gang, let's go, figure this all out, vote on the supermajority vote tonight.
There are nomination papers awaiting you, sure. Sign them up.
Yeah, well, I don't want to work that hard. I'm, I'm retired, so you guys can do what I need. But anyway, that, that's why, you know, I, I want to figure this out. And I was listening to your argument, and I'm thinking, maybe we should have more people on the board. Because, you know, if we have a, you know, a problem with turnover, maybe we should have a seven-person board. That didn't come up. You know, we're thinking about changing things to improve it and make it better. Is it possible that a seven-person board would be a better number? And is there any reason? I'm just asking the question.
Well, actually, I don't know if you, that was one of the things I was commenting on. Several of the boards that have three-year terms have more than five members. The most common number is seven. There are different, some have nine, there's, you know, and there are other ways to do it. That would be something that would alleviate at least one of the comments that we've made. And it sort of goes to what I'm trying to make as a point, which is, whether this is a good idea or not, is going to ultimately be up to town meeting to decide.
Right.
I'm honestly trying to point out the logistics of how this works. And at town meeting, if that's the only real place you have a chance to try to explain all the possible issues, ramifications and all that, it's a really difficult place to do that, when you're going from scratch. What's that?
You have five minutes to speak when you go.
Well, that's what I mean. So it's a really bad place to try to explain what looks like a fairly straightforward thing has an awful lot of outshot shoot important things. The seven-member potential, to me, that would be something I would think would be good to look into before moving forward with something like this, not retroactively after doing it, when you realize maybe there's a problem. Which is why I'm trying to pointing out in advance, saying, I don't know if enough homework has been done here to determine if what's presented would be sufficient to either get what you want done or to allow the work of the planning board to continue to go forward in the best interests of the town after this happens. And it's too late, once it happens, if you haven't looked at all those other possibilities, as you just pointed out. Does it make sense that in conjunction with this, you should have also looked at and potentially made the change to the number of people on the board? Maybe those two extra people are associate members and only vote in the event that they have to vote because other members can't. Some towns do that. This is the kind of research I'm talking about, that when making this kind of change you would think would have been done and presented as part of the whole thing with specifics, not generalities. That is a very good example of it, is that maybe the reason three-year work in some towns is because the board size is different. That's why it works, as opposed to a five-member board somewhere. I'm not telling you that absent fact, I'm saying it's a possibility that should probably be looked into before you jump the gun and only do one piece potentially of an issue. That's really what I'm getting at, and I think you've pointed out a very similar idea.
So while we're having just a discussion here, right? You said you could have two associate members who only voted through a certain criteria. Why would you have associate versus full members?
So for an example, I'll give you in our own town. The Board of Appeals, which used to be five members, had a difficult time keeping quorum after they were changed to an appointed board. The board was reduced from five voting members to three voting members, if I understand it correctly. There were also two associate members. Those members are only voting when they don't have the other three members either present or there's some, maybe, I, I don't know all of the logistics, it's possible that they vote in the case of a conflict of interest. I don't, I don't know, I'll be honest, I'm not sure what all the reasons are.
I was looking into 501(c)(3), and I believe it's the part, but I just wondered why associate versus...
Some of these other boards that have three-year terms have between two, three, depending on the size of the board, some of them only have five voting members, official members, and then some associate members to offset some of the kind of problems that we're noting here as a way to prevent that. Not all, I'll be honest, not every single three-year-term board has associate members or more than five members. I'll stipulate, that's not all of them. I'm saying there are quite a few that do that, and I, you know, I just think that it would be something you'd want to look into, why that might be the case in those places, and why that may or may not make sense to either have a larger board, a board with associate members. I don't know, I'm not saying, I didn't put this thing forward. I'm just trying to point out things that I see as they're not being addressed. And it would be literally, literally impossible to address, I have like six, six and a half pages worth of research that I had to do to try and talk about this, that I wrote out. You cannot get through six and a half pages of information at town meeting to try and explain to the folks at town meeting what's about to happen when they've been told that what they're looking at is just simply a straightforward thing and, don't worry about it. There's nothing else to it than just, we can, we should, go ahead. And that's really what I feel like's going on here. I think there needs to be more work before this is put, before the town, because trying to do this kind of stuff afterwards, retro, to when the problems that could occur, occur, when we only have two town meetings and there's really only one official one every year, you know, you can't, you can't operate in a six-month window, you know, trying to get something done if it turns out you made a mistake. You know, it's really difficult to, to correct that mistake once it's done. It just seems like it would make more sense to do all that upfront and come forward with one well-researched, well-thought-out, well-explained reason for doing something, as opposed to just simply because you can't. And that's my point, that's been my point this entire time, it was my point at last town meeting. I just think there's more work that needs to be done to make sense of this small paragraph of what it really means or could mean for the town. And this, tonight is one of the opportunities, I felt, where some of that information could get out. I suspect that this will follow the same process as last time, and that means it'd go to the finance committee. I spoke online last time, so I have no idea, I couldn't even begin to tell you what the attendance is at a finance committee hearing for, I suppose it's probably similar to ours. The, the attendance is probably not steep. So then you're talking about getting in front of that, you know, 150 people that show up at town meeting and trying to explain in five minutes, in my case, six and a half pages worth of things I think they should know before they're asked to vote on something like this. That's just my opinion, I'm not putting that on anybody else. I worry about the vagueness of this and whether or not all the possibilities and concerns have been thought of. Because I haven't heard them. I just haven't, and I still haven't. Maybe at the next hearing, I will, I don't know. But that's just me. Sure, if you have anything else, I'd be happy to hear it.
You know, I can probably debate anything forever, which is one of my faults in life.
I, I may be doing the same thing, and that's probably, no one's going to like it, they're all going to get mad at me, so.
You can take this outside, yeah, but you're here.
So I apologize, I'm going to have to hand Mr. Fowler the gavel to hit me with, so I apologize.
No, I, you know, I love these intellectual pursuits, and I do, and I want to go back to what I said before, because I think, you know, it can get lost in the vagueness, the awful vagueness. But the fact that so many people feel that something needs to change with the planning board, maybe they don't understand what you're going through, but it's pretty clear to me that there's a lot of resentment to what's happened as a result of decisions of the board over, you know, several years. And I, you know, I really haven't paid enough attention to have an opinion, so don't take that to the feat that you're doing a bad job. Just telling you, the feeling that I get out there is that they think that the planning board has done things that, that they, they don't like and they want change, right? And I think we need to, we collectively, for the benefit of the town, need to figure out how to do this differently and better, so that it works in a way that they feel we're doing a good job. And I, I mean that collectively, the greater, the greater we, the people that are really trying to get stuff done.
Well, I appreciate your comment, because honestly, I think it's the one I was making, which is I think the reasoning behind this is probably more to what you just said, which is an issue with the planning board and a wish to, because of decisions we've made or whatnot. So I think in honesty, I think your comment just now may be the most honest comment about the reasons behind the petition. And that's certainly, I mean, it's certainly an allowable reason. I'd honestly probably have an easier time understanding all of this if that were just simply put forward as the reason. I could, I honestly believe, as you've just stated, that that is probably the feeling of many of the petitioners for this, the one you just gave. And I, I think that's very possible, and people are certainly entitled to that opinion.
And, and, yeah, I, I know, all entitled to our opinion, but I, I do believe that, you know, what we said earlier, I said earlier, I'll speak for myself, that if you have two slots open, you're more likely to get more people thinking that it's a good idea to run. And if you have three-year terms, it's not such a long commitment if you want to give it a shot. You know, if you have to sign up for five years, something you don't really know that much about, that's a much bigger deal. That's like a kid going through college and starting in the master's program, right? It's a long time, five years. Three years is a pretty long time, but it's not as daunting. And running against an individual versus running for an open seat or two is a far different thing, in my opinion. That's, the little that I know is it's just a pure citizen.
Fair enough. I appreciate your comments.
How this town is supposed to work.
Can I have a comment?
And I thank you for your time, truly, for your work.
Thank you. All right. Anything? Do we want to focus on the audience? Well, Mr. Fittah, you did have one thing you wanted to ask, but I'm...
Well, I just a comment, Mr. Schick, I know you've been around a long time, and I appreciate what you do in town, but people blame us for a lot of things in town. We don't make proposals, people bring in proposals. We don't have a staff person on board that goes out and markets the town of Tewksbury for this particular type of development or this particular type of business to commit to town. We don't have that. It's what comes in front of us and what we make decisions on and review for the, for the best of Tewksbury. And that's my, my, my view, my opinion on why I'm on the planning board, is I, these people come in, like, like tonight, and they make proposals and presentations. They try to do a reasonable job and be fair and equitable on what they want to present. But we don't have that person that goes out and gets a, you know, a tech company to come in and occupy this particular building, because it'll be a good commercial for Tewksbury. It's whatever comes in in front of us, we look at, review, and make a decision on, whether it be housing, commercial, residential, and everything else. So, I mean, that's what, what we do here. We don't come in with new proposals. We just review what's given to us according to the zoning bylaws in town and make some exceptions here and there for the best of Tewksbury. And that's what I do, so. And that's all, I'm all set. Thank you. Mr. Reiner?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Schick. I had one, I mean, one comment. He mentioned he was out collecting signatures, I, I guess for the people watching this meeting. You stated the people were, want change. How many people signed a petition and what is the number of people you need to put the citizen petition forward?
Sure. So for special town meeting, we're required to collect 100 signatures.
Okay. So that just, I just wanted to clarify, so 100 people out of 30,000 think that there should be a change?
Actually, we've collected close to 500 signatures.
Okay, well, and that was a question, so, all right, so we'll throw...
So we've had a lot of conversations?
That's okay, 500 people. And, you know, and I wish those 500 people would come to these meetings.
I wish they'd go to town meetings.
We do as well.
Because I think those 500 people, whether they come to these meetings or they go to town meeting, and they can come in and sit in these meetings and understand that what we go through, it's a lot different what you hear on TV and what you see on TV, because I was on the other side of that. And it's much different sitting here. And to what Vinnie stated, and I hear it, oh, the planning board, you're on that board. I am on that board. And at the end of the day, what we make a decision on may not be the most popular decision, but the decision is what we were elected to do is make the best decision what goes on that parcel. It may not be the best decision or the decision that this abboter wants or this abboter wants, but it's the decision that what could be on this parcel that this abboter may not want or this abboter may not want. So there's a balance. And coming into this room and seeing that, they'll get a better understanding that we're really not that bad of a board. Out of those 500 people that want to change, we're really not that bad of a board. We're trying to do the best we can with the information that we're given and within the zoning that has been put forth in front of this town that changed years back because nothing was being built in this town, and then all of a sudden, the planning board is getting the black eye of that. It's really not fair, because we have to approve what is allowed within that zone or on that parcel. So I welcome those 500 people. I would love to see 500 people here for this meeting twice a month. So.
Yeah, I think in fairness, to speak on behalf as a petitioner, the idea is more opportunity more often for people to participate, as Mr. Schick pointed out. Removing any barrier that someone may feel to participation by knowing there are multiple seats open versus feeling concern about challenging one individual. This is not a referendum on the board from the petitioner's side. This is not a referendum on any one member of the board from the petitioner's side. This is more opportunity more often.
And I, I hope I didn't imply that I didn't think that that, that part is fact. I just hope that people can also understand that when you point out something like, as you said, you know, your, your hope is that more people would run because you have multiple seats up at a time. I'm simply trying to point out things like Chelmsford, who, that is the fact of what happens in Chelmsford. They have three-year terms, and yet somehow in a decade, they've only had one competitive race. I think there are other reasons why people don't run or don't run for the planning board as a very, as a specific example, that have nothing to do with the years that the board serves. It has to do more, I think, with the items we have to deal with, the lack or the respect or lack of respect that the board gets for what it has to deal with. It's, you know, I pointed out before, not that it's important to many people, but the way this board, compared to the other boards, you know, is compensated for the time you put in. There's reasons why people might not run. I suspect they may be the reasons why people haven't run in Chelmsford, who's had a three, who have a three-year... who's had a three, who have a three-year term. I just think it's not the panacea that people think it's going to be to the problem all by itself. I'm not saying if you change the term, it might not have an effect. I'm saying, have you looked at whether or not it has anywhere else had the effect you think it's going to have? And if you have, please show that, because I'm seeing in the things I've looked at, I think some evidence that that's not in and of itself the problem. It may be a problem, but I feel there might be other ones connected to it, which is why I feel that more research would be necessary to determine that. If local, even towns around us, even if you set aside the umpteen towns in the western part of the state that I think are the ones that are doing the three-year terms mostly, because they're tiny, even if you just take the ones around us, they're not getting the competition that you're looking for. I think someone should ask why, because it's not, it can't be the term limit or the term of office.
It's $700 a year.
There's got to be some other pieces, I think, or those boards would have a lot more competition. Chelmsford has it, though Rickett really hasn't anything different than us. You know, so that's why I'm asking whether or not people are being presented enough information to know if they're making a fully informed decision, because they may think, as the resident mentioned, that maybe there should be some change to the Planning Board. Fair enough. That's fine. But are you sure that this is enough in and of itself for the change you're talking about when it not necessarily being shown in other places that it is? Maybe there are a few pieces that need to be put together to get the result you're looking for. And all I'm saying is maybe those should be looked at before only a single thing is brought forward. That's all. That's just, you know, my thought.
Another thing, you know, we sit here as a board. We attend a lot of meetings through the course of a year. We do a lot of research through the course of a year. We get paid. Do you have any idea what we get paid?
I do.
$700 a year.
That's outside of the scope of this.
But you're looking for competition, okay? You're looking for this and that. You think you're going to do hours and hours' worth of work for $700 a year? How much competition can you get with that?
That's Mr. Johnson's word, just for clarification, competition.
Okay, but.
Opportunity.
But what I'm saying to you is, is if you were a contractor, say if you were a contractor and you had an acre and a half land on Route 38 that you're paying for, you bring that acre and a half of land to the Planning Board. Now, the only thing the Planning Board can do is you can't tell the guy not to build. Can't do it. It's his property. He's doing all, he's obeying all the rules. He brings the property. The only thing we have control over is the affordable units that we can get, the sidewalk money we can get, and to make it look like a nice piece of property for the town. Along with the fact that the people that own that property pay taxes for this town. We govern a lot of things. My thing is, I'm really, really hurt that somebody, after I have worked on this board five years, as hard as I have, I am so upset, and I think you can tell it in my voice, that we get treated with just a comment. Well, we go to three years instead of five. It upsets me. I've worked too damn hard on this board to do the right thing for this town. And for somebody to just come in and want to wipe it and change it doesn't work for me. That's why I'm that upset, okay? And everybody on this board knows how upset. They didn't even want me to talk because they knew how upset I was. But the thing is, I think what you're doing and what your 500 people are doing is so unfair to this Board of Directors. It looks like we got a slap in the face after breaking our ass to do the right thing. Excuse my language. That's it for me.
Thank you.
I don't want to say another word tonight.
I think we're all set.
We're all set. All right. No one else, right? Those chats? I'll give you one more, if you want.
No, just thank you.
Oh, all right. I didn't know. I saw you kind of look at each other, so I wasn't really sure.
Not at all. Thank you.
All right. Well, we appreciate you guys bringing this in, and I'm sure that one or several of us will see you with the Finance Committee next.
Yeah, if.
And go from there.
If anybody does, you know, want to bring a resident article to Town Meeting in regards to changing your stipend, I'm more than happy to help you on that.
Again, it's just, it's just meant, I don't think anybody on here was meant to that to sound like we're complaining about that. That's not what it was. It was really just meant.
Created a subcommittee for that, did they not?
They may have. Like I said, that's not, it was not meant, I hope, and I'm sure none of the members meant that. It was just simply saying, when you cobble it all together, there are other factors out there. And that was all. I don't think anybody in here is saying, you know, "Do or don't do all that stuff. I don't care. That's fine." That's a separate issue from the one you have in front of us.
Sure.
I'm just saying that was, those things were being pointed out as potential other factors beyond just simply the term of the office for why people may or may not run. That's all. So people are free to choose to add, subtract, whatever. That's completely up to the folks, too. So, but otherwise, nothing else on this? All right, we thank you guys for coming in. Appreciate it. Thank you. Moving on to old business. Is there any old business anybody wishes to discuss?
No.
We just see no old business?
We just didn't.
Any new business anybody wishes to discuss? Hearing none. I didn't see any correspondence in the package, so we're all set there. I'll take a motion for adjournment.
So we'll take the adjournments.
All right, a motion made in second. All is favorable, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is opposed. Motion carries. Good evening. We'll see you on the 13th. Thank you.